This is the meeting of the Beaufort County Board of Education located Hilton Head Island Middle School Media Center, February the 18th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. We'll have a public session from 6:00 to 9:15:00, hybrid video conferencing, and this will be live streamed on the county channel. In accordance with new safety and security guidelines, bags, backpacks, and purses are prohibited by the public at Beaufort County Board of Education meetings. Requests for public comments participation will be accepted between 5:00 and 5:30 p.m. By sending an email with your name, phone number, and topic to robin@cushingberry@beaufort.k12.sc.us. You will receive a phone call during the public comments where you will be able to speak and address the board for a maximum of three minutes on issues within the board's domain. The forum will be limited to 30 minutes. If you are in person, you may address the board for a maximum of three minutes on issues within the board's domain. Each speaker must fill out a public comment card. Please see the board clerk for a card. Requests for the second public comments will be accepted between 7:00 and 7:30 p.m. In the same manner as above. The second public comments will take place prior to adjournment, no later than 9:00 p.m. The second forum will be limited to 15 minutes. In the event the board has not finished addressing all items listed on the February the 18th, 2025 agenda, the board will reconvene at 6:00 p.m. on February the 19th, 2025, the next business day, to finish the agenda items. With that, we will, we will call the meeting to order as we've done. And is the secretary online? Okay, is there a motion to go into executive session? So moved by Madam Chloe Gordon.
She needs to read what's on the agenda.
Oh, here you go.
Thank you. Thank you. I move that we move into executive session to discuss negotiations incident to proposed amendment number seven with Shoreline Construction and Development LLC for the DISC Technology Warehouse and Imaging Center 2023 referendum, scope guaranteed, maximum price GMP proposal pursuant to South Carolina Code ANN 30-4-70 Parent A, Parent II.
Okay, it's been properly moved and is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. That's it, Chair, we're going to executive. Get all those, Robin.
Is there someone in I T. I can talk to yet?
Can we go through that vote again just so Robin can capture that? My bad.
I can't tell who all is on.
Please, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Thank you.
S-yes.
Aye.
Nay. Aye.
Aye.
I got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone. We are now into the public session and Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Um?
It's sound my phone.
Okay.
Close it to you.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Secretary, are there any actions coming out of executive session?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman, we have a motion from executive session. I move that the Board of Education approve amendment number seven with Shoreline Construction and Development LLC for the construction of the D E S C Technology Warehouse and Imaging Center based on the guaranteed maximum price or GMP of three million, fifty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-four.
Okay. Properly motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those on the, um, coming in digitally?
Aye.
Aye.
Afother, aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Mr. Smith?
For Smith is going to be a no.
Okay.
Yes, can be no for Smith.
All right. Motion passes, one no, and the rest ayes. Thank you very much. Is there?
Do we hear from Ms. Frazier? Was she online?
Oh, I thought she did. Did Ms. Frazier respond?
I didn't.
I didn't, but aye.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Thank you, Ms. Boatright. Okay, is there a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda for, um...
That's all you need to say.
You got, you nailed it.
Second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Second by Madam Secretary Boatright. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Those online?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, now if you'll join me for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it is nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Ms. Boatright, I mean, not Ms. Boatright, sorry.
No, I'm paying attention.
Ms. Cushionberry, has the media been notified?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And points of celebration, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Um, this evening, uh, we are celebrating, uh, Student of the Month for the month of January. January's character trait was perseverance, and perseverance is defined as pursuing worthy objectives with determination and patience while exhibiting fortitude when confronted with failure. The Northern Beaufort County, for Northern Beaufort County, the January Student of the Month is James Miranda, a senior at Battery Creek High School, and here to introduce James is Principal Denise Lassard.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez and board members. James, if you'd be willing to come up here, and you're welcome to bring your family up with you if you'd like. Um, when I got the email saying that James had been chosen for the January Student of the Month, I literally was overwhelmed with joy and gratitude. This student definitely exemplifies what perseverance is. A couple of years ago, he was facing some personal challenges, and he took it upon himself to take the initiative to reach out to his school counselor and myself, and he spoke up for himself to get some support and help beyond what we do just on an everyday basis, and I think that made all the difference. Um, he made some choices that he had to take some accountability for, and I just couldn't be prouder of how he handled that, and he is on track to graduate on time in May, and that's because of all of his hard work. It, he did it all himself, and just so grateful to have him on our student body. So, thank you so much, James. You make me very proud.
to attend tonight, so we're going to move on to the next point of celebration, which is Battery Creek High School's Youth and Government. You may remember that back in December, I shared that for the first time Battery Creek participated in the Youth and Government Annual Conference, and tonight we're celebrating these students, and here to tell us more about them and their experiences is William Kinsey, social studies teacher and youth and government advisor.
I just want to personally and publicly thank Mr. Kinsey. We've been talking about getting IG and Model UN started at Battery Creek for a while, and he took it and ran, and I just am so excited for what they've accomplished. So, thank you, Mr. Kinsey.
Before Mr. Kinsey begins his remarks, I'd like to call up Ashley Reyes-Sandival, Imani Douglas, James Breland, and Sonia McMillan.
Ashley and, um, Imani are caught in traffic, but they are on the way. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Beaufort County School District and Dr. Rodriguez for, first of all, providing us the opportunity with these programs. Uh, Youth in Government, Model UN, Incubate Debate, YR Judges, uh, and then we have Academic World Quest, which is coming up this weekend. Um, we've initiated all four at Battery Creek, and I've been extremely, extremely lucky to have seven dedicated students that are in all four, and, uh, we've done extremely well. But tonight, we're celebrating the youth in government. Well, back in November, we got to travel to Columbia for four days and participate in our first conference. Um, Jonathan Miller from Beaufort High and Corinne Millip have been my guys and lifesaver, so a big shout out to them. But ladies and gentlemen, they have just run with it. Uh, we get to Columbia and actually, there were four hundred and ninety-seven D reached the governor's desk to be signed. They were one of the seventy. They had an amendment, uh, that required a few more restrictions. But the shocker was, they only give out twelve of the best written bills. So, Sanaya McMillan and, um, they received one of the twelve best written bills out of four hundred and ninety bills submitted. So, I mean, extremely proud. Um, Model UN is doing great, and we're just extremely ecstatic and glad to have them on board with us, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent. Congratulations to those that have won, and thanks for all your resiliency and, uh, continuing to move forward. At this point, we will move into public comments. I'd like to read a statement first, if I may. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker on Beaufort County School District and school-related topics. Citizens wishing to participate in public comments can do so in person or via phone. There are two scheduled public comment forum times during each board meeting. The first is a thirty-minute session at the beginning of the meeting, limited to topics on the board meeting agenda. The second is a fifteen-minute session, which takes place prior to adjournment, but no later than nine P M. Requests to participate in public comments via phone will be accepted electronically. You can find the Board of Education Public Comment Forum on our website, www.bufortschools.net/about-us/board-of-ed-public comments. Please sign up using the public comment forum twenty-four hours from the day of the meeting prior to. So, requests will be subsequently, will subsequently receive a phone call during their respective forum time, public forum time, and should be ready to speak. Citizens desiring to participate in person must fill out a public comment card that can be obtained from the board clerk, Ms. Robin Cushionberry, upon arrival. Ms. Cushionberry, are there any?
Not for the first.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The Chair's report would like to, um, note that, um, as we had a meeting at Beaufort Jasper ACE, at which, um, we elected new officers, and I, the undersigned was elected chair. We also have two other members who are participants from Beaufort County School District, Mr. Alfonso Small and Ms. Leah Frazier. It was a very good meeting. Uh, we had some new financial successes that were presented by our very own CFO, Ms. Crosby, and we had some other efforts in terms of students going to participate in Columbia in various programs. So, uh, we feel very good about what's happening and moving forward. That was one thing we wanted to, to make sure that we note. The other thing is, uh, the committees have begun meeting, uh, so you'll begin to see a constant flow of information and actions, and we hope that those who are hearing this will definitely be involved, and, um, we'll be able to talk about those types of things that are beneficial to the school district and the students and the people who are affected by it. At this point in time, we would like to sort of give a committee report. Uh, we just did ACE, but I really would like now to speak about the Finance Committee, where we had our first meeting, um, with Ms. Crosby and her team. Ms. Crosby presented on the following reports, a one-page summary of Finance Department responsibilities, which really went a long way to helping us identify who does what, and the sequence, and what their particular role is, so that was very beneficial. Board Monthly Budget Report, a monthly one hundred thousand dollar report for the months of November and December, a Transparency Report for the months of November and December. We also held discussions regarding the creation of a more efficient method of reporting transparency to the board. Staff will explore options. I'd like to speak to that on a moment, for a moment, if I may. Uh, the Finance Department does such a phenomenal job of providing data, and as leaders, what we're looking for is to be able to spend our time very efficiently identifying where the exceptions are. So, the Finance Department has taken the lead, and thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for providing support on that, to actually allow us to begin looking at variance analysis. So, you establish the ranges, and then we, as leaders, participants, look at where performance exceeds an acceptable variance, and it sort of allows us to sort of Hawkeye right to where we need to spend our time. So, that's a tremendous, uh, advantage, and thank you again, Ms. Crosby and your team. Ms. Crosby also presented, excuse me, the second quarter financial report. The district's financial status is strong, still has a top-tier rating matched only by one or two other districts in the state of South Carolina. January twenty-twenty-five tax information is important for projections of current and future years. That, too, looks very good, and we are blessed that we have a very conservative approach to how we manage the finances. Ms. Crosby then presented an OE eighteen School Food and Nutrition Services report. She reported on program information, participation levels, capital investments, and after-school food service opportunities, which are very, very, there are many ways in which the district helps support the larger community. Uh, an update was provided on the debt service program, including the recent fifty-million-dollar bond issue paying off the August twenty-twenty-four bond anticipation note, and the next bond issue would close in May or June of twenty-twenty-five for twenty-twenty-three referendum projects. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March thirteenth, at one-thirty P M.
We have videos, but please.
Okay, can we play those?
Evening. Um, for operational expectation eighteen, which we have for you this evening, for ultimate approval, we, um, have a couple of videos that show, uh, a production crew actually came into Beaufort County Schools, uh, went to several schools, and was, uh, produced an amazing video. These are a few excerpts today of those videos. These are our kids, our staff, um, and it was, uh, an amazing, um, video at the end of the day, uh, compiled, but of course, we didn't want to, um, play the entire thing because it would have been about ten minutes for you, so we just got to have a couple of videos for you this evening to be able to see, uh, our food service team in action.
So, as a company, how we bring to life our model of caring for people, serving great food, really starts at the top, and every day we make it a priority to care for the people that work for us, whether it's those personal connections, caring about their life outside of work, whether it's caring for somebody who's in a crisis. That's a priority for us. Honestly, some days it's more of a priority than the meals that we're serving, because if we don't take care of our individuals, those meals are not going to deliver to our standards. That makes all the difference in the world. People on the front line who truly care about what they're doing, it's not just a job. That's what sets nutrition apart from our competitors.
So, there's a lot of different programs that we offer. We have Wellness Wednesday, we have Nutrition Education, which is like my favorite part of the job. We have Crave Days, um, Tasty Bites, all different things like that. We implement those in the menu. Um, so, Tasty Bites are like a fun, uh, kind of like dessert-type items. And then Wellness Wednesdays, the D F Ns will actually go into their school, and they have a table outside in the cafeteria, which is a great way for students to try a different recipe, fruits and vegetables. And then Nutrition Ed, right now I'm doing one on, on the table, so just teaching kids about fruits and vegetables, where they come from, like if they have a garden at home, and the importance of that.
That's good. Um, we're just going to show those to you this evening in the interest of time, but, um, we went with Nutrition Group just, just as we are coming out of COVID, so we've been with them for about two and a half, almost three years. A small company and really focused on the presentation and the food, uh, and, uh, they have done, for me, uh, it was a night and day from improvement in the system, so, um, I commend them for the service that they brought to the district. And this evening, we have a question for you for approval of OE eighteen. Thank you.
Yep. Please.
All right. Uh, I move that the Board of Education accept OE eighteen Monitoring Report for School Food Services.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Boatright, second by Ms. Chloe Gordon. All here, if you'll raise your hand, and then those on board who are on digital.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, once, once we do that, we need to have, actually, there's a discussion, and then after the discussion, um, the, the vote. Yeah, yes, sir.
No problem. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from online?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, my, my, my questions are, um, have, since we've had this company, um, how many, um, how many surveys have, have we done? Because I know when we had the other company, we, we did surveys with students and so forth, um, and because is that, this is not to extend this contract, this is just to say that, that this company is, what's this, so what's exactly are we, by, doing by approval, so what are you, what are you looking for exactly?
Um, this is approval of OE eighteen Monitoring Report, essentially saying, this, this isn't contract-related. This is, this is related to, uh, the district's monitoring of OE eighteen and the monitoring plan.
Thanks for that clarification, but, um, that, my, my question would still stand as, have, have we done any, um, have we done any surveys in terms of this company, in terms of, uh, how, how students are feeling about, about this?
Uh, the company does surveys of their own, but, uh, as Dr. Rodriguez said, this, uh, that is not included in this OE eighteen report.
Okay. Well, I would just be kind of looking for in the future from, when we say monitoring, I mean that we're monitoring and we're understanding how our kids and how our community feels about the respectful, respectfully about these, uh, these food, these different foods we've heard, because I've heard some different things and, um, I've heard the different, different, different opinions of it, and so that's why it's always, always great to sometime to, uh, to do some surveys so that we can see how our students are, are feeling about the food that they're getting fed, that they're getting fed, so.
And if you'd like to share those, uh, opinions, I'd be happy to... And if you'd like to share those opinions, I'd be happy to take those and relay those back to the company, so we certainly want to be able to address any concerns that may be out there.
Thank you for that, but I still will, I still also will be expecting a, these surveys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any further comments? Ms. Crosby?
No, sir.
Okay. Any further discussions from anyone? Okay, ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All here are voting aye. Those on the digital connection, Ms. Hay made a very good comment, if you will, let's vote in alphabetical order of your last name. Okay.
Would that be Frazier first?
Yes. Ms. Frazier? Okay.
Colonel Guyer?
Guyer, aye.
Oh, okay. Welcome, Colonel Guyer. Glad to have you here, sir, digitally. Mr. Nay?
Nay, aye.
Mr. Small?
Gordon.
Aye.
He's not here. Okay. All right, you captured that? Okay, passes. Thank you. Okay, the next one, would like to note that the Finance Committee is composed of Ms. Hay and Ms. Chloe Gordon, and so it's a wonderful combination of experience across many sectors of education, as well as superb analytical skills, so feels very comfortable to work in support of the Finance Group. Legislative, there, the Legislative Committee had its first meeting. The Legislative Committee is starting out with an acronym, basically to talk about searching for events, legislative actions, proposals that affect the school district, to discover what they mean for the school district, to then discuss how to move forward and what appropriate actions, if any, are necessary or appropriate, and then lastly, to develop next steps. That all culminates in, we want the Legislative Committee going forward to make sure we minimize the surprises of legislative acts that we have not actually had a very good discussion about, so that we can create and develop responses, actions that benefit the school district. So, you'll see a lot more information coming out. Earlier today, I spent a few hours going through the House of House prefile bills, which are just numerous, and many of them do affect school districts, and so we're going to be sending that out so the Legislative Committee can take a look and respond and sort of decide how to go forward. So, you'll be seeing more from this particular group. The members are Ms. Boatwright, Ms. Hay, Ms. Chloe Gordon, and Pastor Isaac Gordon as well, so spread across the county and have very good connections, and so we hope you'll be, we expect you'll be seeing some good information, and we'll be soliciting direction from those here on the board as in administration, as well as in the audience. Okay. Operations?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, let's see what we got here. So, for the 2019 Bond Referendum Monthly Project Updates, all projects are being considered reported as green. Everything's underway, the Bond Referendum closeouts, we have 24 items remaining to close out, with many of those in the closeout document phases, so we're just waiting for the documents, the final documents to come in. For the referendum financial update, the Bond, 2019 Bond Referendum budget was $375,710,000. Currently, total paid and committed funds are $373,610,236. The remaining available funds, including contingency, is $2,099,765. And the contingency remaining at the end of January is $884,692. At the Operations Committee meeting, we asked about the overage of funds, the remaining funds. At the next Operations Committee meeting, there will be a discussion on possible projects for any of the remaining funds, and of course, the discussion will include following all and any of our rules that govern the spending of the 2019 referendum. For, at that point, is there any questions concerning the 2019 referendum? All right, hearing that. For the 2023 Bond Referendum Project Updates, all monthly projects are reported as green except for one. The May River Elementary School Town of Bluffton Permit is on hold until the Palmetto Bluff Property Owners Association agreement is negotiated. Those are currently underway right now with the superintendent, and at the end of brief, if there are any questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Oding, and he can answer any further questions. For the financial update for the 2023 Bond Referendum, current referendum budget is $439,35,000. Paid and committed funds are $178,810,697. Remaining available funds, including contingency, is $260,224,303. There are no program contingencies activity to report for January of 2025. For other project updates, all monthly project updates are reported green, traffic lights for budget and schedule. For requests for proposals and requests for qualifications, notice of award was approved at the February 4th meeting, notice of approval, or, sorry, notice of award was issued to Jumper Carter C's Architects for the Bluffton High School CTE building, and notice of award was approved at the February 4th meeting, was issued to Caitly Co Architects for the Wardenview Charter School Gymnasium. For the custodial report, Ms. Medus gave the first custodial brief after hiring our three custodial companies, so those are underway, and we are starting to collect data on their performance. As far as maintenance goes, maintenance is underway, we're slowly climbing out of the overage of maintenance calls. The Blitz on Hilton Head Island Elementary School was canceled due to weather last month, but it will continue in February. Our next Operations Committee meeting is March 11 at 1700. And, bearing any questions, that completes my report. If there's any questions, Mr. Oding is the person to answer.
Any questions from anyone?
No, I was going to say we have, Mr. Oding has something he needs to bring up.
Mr. Oding?
Yes, if I can, there are two motions coming out of committee to bring in front of the board if we can today. The two were having to do with the annexation of the property for the Early Childhood Center, having it annexed into the Town of Bluffton. This area is surrounded by the Town of Bluffton, and part of this project is to bring it into Town Bluffton before the Bluffton Early Childhood Center, the Early Childhood Center that will be in Bluffton is constructed so it can be contiguous with the rest of the properties around there. So, with that, I'll take any questions you have on the annexation of that property into the Town of Bluffton. This was approved by the committee and voted yes, so.
Mr. Smith? I said on the committee, I voted no, I have some concerns due to the fact of that we're annexing these properties into the Town of Bluffton, and if it sits into the Town of the, I mean, if it sits into the county, then for the, for the people who are, for the people who don't understand, what would be the pros and cons of annexing this property into the City of Bluffton?
So, one of the items that we brought up or discussed was that you have the Early Childhood Center that would be located right next door to River Ridge, I mean, they're within, you could look out and see one from the other, and if it was remained in the county, you'd have in one building an SRO from the county, and in the other building, an SRO from the Town of Bluff, and they're right next to each other. So, it just makes more sense and would work better if both were within the Town of Bluffton and both had SROs, say, from the Town of Bluffton. So, that, that's just one example of the advantages of having them together. Outside of that, it's within the Town of Bluffton's plan for all, for that property to become eventually in the Town of Bluffton, and it just makes sense, before we construct it, to go ahead and make that change.
And, well, a couple things that you said there, brings for me personally, just, in terms of, I understand that the Town of Bluffton would prefer that to be annexed into the Town of Bluffton, but you know, when our officers, law enforcement partners, when they practice from school to school, I believe that it doesn't really matter which department has that school, I believe that they all are going to support each other in ways that will give us good rapid responses and terms, so I don't believe that, that's to me, as this from my, from my one vote, would give me the gumption to say that that would be something that we would need to do, because, you know, now, if we're giving, if we're giving the Bluffton something, because you said that they wanted, that's one of their goals, to get this in, to get this into the Town of Bluffton, then my question is, you know, what are they going to give us in return? Because, you know, you know, this is a negotiation thing, in terms of us kind of bidding to them, I mean, as a school district, we are, as this people who sit around this dials, we have to start leveraging our wheelhouse in terms of, to bettering our students and our needs, and wants, need versus wants in this district as well, so my question would be, moving forward, because there are permit issues, or different things, what is the Town of Bluffton willing to do, and how they're willing to work with us to help us reach these deadlines and these, and things moving forward? Because, I mean, I mean, we can, but to me, we deal with need versus wants, like, is it, is it in terms of, is it much more cheaper to annex into it? It's, to me, it just, I'm just looking for more clarity in terms of why, just besides the officer.
Mr. Chair, can I vote?
Yes.
As my senior colleague from the Third District pointed out, the motion should be made and seconded, and then we should open the floor for discussion. So, currently, Mr. Smith is actually out of order.
Okay. I think.
Sean, the motion?
Sir, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I move to support the annexation of the property formerly owned by the SRO, which is owned by the Board of Education and is adjacent to the River Ridge Academy property and recommends board review and approval.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and second conversation.
And I would just go back to the same, the same, the same question, because I believe I was asked for a question in terms, so, so that's, that's, that's still, that question still, is whether we're calling for the vote or not, it's, the question's on the table, I still, as a board member, I still want that question answered, because I need clarity on that, for me, for me to vote and support this and be able to have a good conscience and sleep tonight. Thank you.
So, just to answer your question, the recommendation, or, one way to answer your question is, the recommendation to annex into the Town of Bluffton came from our design team, just due to the cost and timeframe that it takes for permitting. That was one of their recommendations between the permitting timeframe with the Town of Bluffton and the county. So, that is, what started this was the recommendation from the design team.
Okay. All right, any further discussions? Ready to?
One thing, there was a specific motion that was made in committee, what Mr. Nay read was one that I had written, but just before committee, we got some, a revised version that came from the attorney, and so I'm going to see if Robin can get that up there. Are you able to find that, Robin? So, we can, because there is some specific wording that needs to occur for, or if that's the recommendation from council, do have this be accepted.
Robin, are you going to put it on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, so, there's an existing motion on the table, and it's, you got it?
Yeah, well, as soon as she gets up, I'm going to amend, I'm going to move to amend it.
Got it, got it.
Oh, Lord have mercy, yes, I'm going to try. This is like an eye test, all right. Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Vice Chairman, if you'll allow, I'm going to move to amend the previous motion and replace with the following text, amend and replace. The Operations Committee recommends the Beaufort County School District pursue annexation into the Town of Bluffton and rezoning to residential, is that right, residential? General of Beaufort County Tax Map Parcel, oh my goodness, R, someone's going to have to help me with that, R600.
029.
029, 000.
0034.
0034.
Four zeros.
0000, and R600, 029, 000, 0114.
A, it was 011A.
So close, 011A, 0000. This is very professional. And authorize the superintendent on behalf of the school district to sign all petitions, applications, and other documents required by the Town of Bluffton to complete such annexation and rezoning. So, first, we need to move to vote on my amendment, if that's accepted.
Okay, so moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any further discussion? Ms. Gordon?
Just very quickly, as I listened to my colleague with his question, and then the response from my other colleague, I just want to remind us, I do believe that we have accepted Ms. Boatwright as our parliamentarian, and in doing so, I believe that she can tell another board member whether or not he or she is out of order. I just want us to not lose our professionalism during these meetings and keep it where it is, because a board member can ask questions, but in that timely manner or manner in which they can speak or bring it up or not, that should be up to the parliamentarian to tell us if we're out of order. So, I say that in, in just trying to keep us where we are, but understanding that board members can ask questions, we may not like the questions, we may not like the response, but that is up to the parliamentarian to tell us when and if we are out of order. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon, I will try and do better, but I've never complained about a Marine going in first, so, but I will, I will get Johnny on it.
You should, because he was wrong, just to put that part in it, but I do understand the question that Mr. Smith had, and I also understand the response, but I do think that we have to maintain some order, and that our colleagues speak, and again, we have a new parliamentarian, and I understand that you're learning and things like that, but let's keep this where it is, and for discussion, and he has, he has a question that's discussionable, and a response that I think Mr. Oding has given us, and we voted on it, but I think the other comments of us calling each other out of order, that's not a place right here for that, that's for you, Ms. Boatwright. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, if I could speak, I'm going to chalk it, assign it to the newness of the vice chair, and I think all comments made were in good intentions, so thank you, Mr. Smith, for raising your comments. Mr. Nay, thanks for highlighting that I need to be a little bit more structured and defer to the, to the secretary, so I think it was a good learning exercise, so no issues here.
She's the parliamentarian as well.
Yep, she's a parliamentarian. Okay. So, have we voted?
No, we got to call for the vote on the, on the replace and amend.
Amendment.
On the amendment replace.
And it's been properly moved and seconded, as I recall.
Well, technically, I made the amendment, and so let's put Ms. Hay down as the second.
And I think, Dr. Carr, did you second?
No, no, Ms. Hay seconded my motion.
Oh, Ms. Hay, okay. Not trying to avoid you, Ms. Hay.
I'm trying to step up as a parliamentarian, man, let me tell you, my job's on the line, so, yes, play by the rules.
All right, all here online, I mean, all here in the, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Gordon, did you?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Negative.
Okay, all right, and then online, if we could go.
And then, uh, online, if we could go in alphabetical order, that would be great. Ms. Frazier?
Aye. Yes.
Guyer, aye.
Okay.
Nay?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone else online?
Alfonso, aye.
Okay. All right. Good, motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
So now, Mr. Vice Chairman, we need to vote on the actual amendment. So, um, I move that we vote on the amendment as presented.
Motion by Ms. Boatright, second by Ms. Hay. Uh, any discussions? All in favor? Aye, here. Okay, Mr. Smith, May?
I believe Mr. Smith would be no.
Okay. No for Mr. Smith. Those online in alphabetical order, please? Starting with Ms. Frazier, I believe.
Aye.
Guyer, aye.
Nay, aye.
Alfonso, aye.
Okay, it passes with one nay. Okay? Is there another?
Uh, May, sir, there, there's one more item that was, uh, it was approved by the committee to bring forward to the board, and that is a rezoning request for Ladies Island Middle. Let me just clarify, when we talk about rezoning, this is not about student assignment or anything of that nature. This is about, uh, the building code and the ability to build on sites, uh, within the county, uh, within the Town, Town of Beaufort, I'm sorry. So, um, this came about through, um, some discussions of an alternate design possibility for the new Ladies Island Middle School. And one of the things that came out of that was that there were a lot of advantages to building a three-story school, um, along that shorter construction time, reduced cost, um, minimized disruption of school operations during construction, including leaving the football field open, preserving more trees on site, and just an overall improved layout. Um, most everyone, well, everyone on the committee, uh, agreed with that. And then we went to the City of Beaufort to discuss this possibility. City of Beaufort was on board of that, and we were asking at that time, how, we were looking for a, um, um, not amendment, uh, we were looking to go with a variance on our existing, and it actually came forward that it would be better if we went forward with a rezoning application because the zoning we currently have actually does not allow for a school. Although we would be grandfathered in and be able to build a school there, their suggestion was to go for a different classification, which is IC, which stands for Institutional and Campus District, which does allow for a three-story building. So with that, um...
Yes.
Mr. Oding, um, is the amendment on here, the correct amendment?
Yes, this one is correct. No, this one's fine.
Mr. Chairman, or Vice Chairman, I'll go ahead. Uh, and following with, uh, this presentation, I move that the Board of Education supports the rezoning application for the Ladies Island Middle School property from suburban District T three dash S District to an institutional and campus District IC, and recommends board review and approval.
Second.
Okay, properly, motion and second by Ms. Gordon. Discussions? Yes, Mr. Smith?
This, uh, once again, I also, I, um, I voted no on this, I voted down because there are several, there are several issues, uh, that, that occurs here, uh, with, with, that maybe could disturb my community in terms of, um, right, less than, uh, two or three miles on the street, um, downtown Beaufort, where they want to put three, three, three or four, they want to build up story, uh, three, three stories downtown, and for, and, and one concern is that, once you do this, this open Pandora's box. Because now, once the city allows us to build three stories, then they will have to let everyone else in the city limits build three stories because of the fact that you can't just let one person build three stories. So, I, I, I think that also, that, that this, and even in this timing, should have been sent to the community, because I was at several community meetings when, when that issue took place in the City of Beaufort, where people outraged and people did not want Pandora's Box open, they tried everything, and, and, and they, they pushed for the city to not allow, uh, business owners and, 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 and commercial, commercial businesses to be able to have different levels of flooring. Uh, so, I know, I know, I know this was a very hot topic, and I don't think that the school board should, uh, step on that, I mean, even though, I mean, I mean, it's, the city, the city, um, the city is different, but, once again, us doing that is another, to me, I look at it as possibly another avenue to open up Pandora's Box, and we can have some citizens unhappy with us. And then also, um, I had some, also, some, uh, I was sitting there thinking about it, um, the airport is right next to it, have we checked the AQs of, of that? Because you're talking about building three, three, three stories, uh, had that been approved? Because you just can't build three stories right next to the, uh, the airport. So I, I think there's some different variants, uh, variants that, that need to be checked, that I don't have those answers yet. So I know with that one especially, uh, building in the airport with the AQ, so, with the AQ, with the AQs next to it, and, and that had, that answer, that would definitely makes me, makes me a little, um, uncomfortable voting, voting for this and that. So there, there, there's some other line, and once again, I think that we should, I also said, I mean, that we should have pivoted this, to have this conversation publicly, because the county, I mean, the city, when they, when those people were trying to do that, they ended up, I think they had, they had a, a city, we are meeting, a public meeting and forum about this, and I think that we should have a public forum about this too, moving forward. So I can see how my constituents felt about it, and get those questions answered. Thank you.
Ms. Gordon?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I understand what, um, Mr. Smith is saying, and I can understand how the community, some of the community members may feel. Having been an assistant principal at that school, which is presently a two-story building, right, Mr. Oding?
Yes, ma'am.
And it is not conducive for, uh, middle school students or administrators to try to keep up with. Um, but I think a building of three stories, which would make it more conducive for the students, for the teachers, um, and generally for that community, uh, would be a, a, a good thing. Beaufort is growing, and if we look at the buildings that we're putting up in Beaufort, we also have to grow. And we have to grow with our community, with our kids. That's a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade school, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, all right. And, uh, and so, while you may have the sixth graders on one floor, seventh and eighth on different floors, but there are other communal areas that they, that they will have, I think you have to really think about what is best for that student population. And, um, I think a three-story building would be conducive to the learning process, the, uh, the way that the administrators have to navigate during the day, teachers, nurses, uh, having to get to students, and students just getting around the building. So there's more to that story than just the building. And, and we have to look at the, the use of the building as we go along, and, and twenty-five, thirty years from now, will that school still be there, serving our kids in the capacity that it's being built in? So I'm for it, uh, because I used to think, walking in there and then having to go from one end to the other, to the other, to the middle, I wasn't, I wasn't young, but I got younger, you know? Because it, it actually put it on you to, to task. And I would rather have a building that's accessible to my, to my kids and to my teachers that I can get to, um, in a safe and orderly manner. So I'm for this project, and, uh, and I, if we, if they have a meeting about it, I'll be glad to attend. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Oh, also, and could, could we speak to the AQs, have we checked into that yet?
Um, yes, sir, the AQ zone has to do with the Marine Air Station. This is not within the flight pattern of the Marine Air Station.
Okay, well, how about the flight pattern of Ladies Island Airport? Because Ladies Island Airport is right, is right there by the school, so have we checked within the flight pattern of that in terms of the three, the three, uh, the three-level term, uh, building? So when we, we're talking about a three-story building, and we're talking about a flight pattern, that building, and we're talking about moving that building up, then, then, then when we look, when I, when I drove by and looked at it, moving it up, that definitely will be more in the flight, in the flight pattern versus it being back at the, at the original spot that it was to, to, because I know that also there were some people who lived in the, in the community, right behind it was complaining that, that they wanted that school, the school, uh, closer to their, to their homes. And so now we're moving the schools from their homes to more of the middle of the property, and in the middle of that property, it, it, it screams more of, it may be within that flight pattern. So I have concerns that, once again, even, even with it being in that flight pattern, that we may need to check with the Ladies Island Airport and make sure that we are in the clear before voting on, on this, on this motion. So matter of fact, until we do that today, I'll make a motion that, that we, uh, that we table the discussion until we are brought back with a, um...
Motion on the floor.
But you, but you can, even the motion on the floor, you can, you can table, you can motion, you can table a motion.
That's correct, but it needs a second.
Okay, yeah.
I'll just ask that before we take that up, I think Mr. Oding has additional information, uh, for the board to consider.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Oding?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, um, Mr. Smith, you, you brought up several items in there, and, um, this design that we're putting is pretty much putting the building right where it is today. As a two-story building, it will go to the three-story building. So, and I can tell you, it is not within the flight path of the Ladies Island Airport.
Okay, do we have that in writing somewhere?
I'd be glad to get that for you if you need it in writing, but it is not within the flight path of Ladies Island Airport.
A motion to table has been made, I have not heard a second. If there's no second, then the motion fails. Is there a second? Okay, so then we go back to the original motion.
Okay, all ready to vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented? Aye?
Aye.
Those online, if you vote in alphabetical order?
Leah, aye.
Guyer, aye.
Nay, aye. Alfonso, aye.
Okay, I think the motion carries. Oh, oh, sorry, all those opposed?
Mr. Smith opposed, thank you. No problem, no problem, Mr. Chairman.
I'm a rookie, I'm a rookie.
No, no problem, every, every day we subscribe to get better.
Parliamentarian, less into action, right?
Appreciate you. Teamwork. Appreciate it.
All right.
Mr. Vice Chairman, the, uh, next item is under the superintendent's report, and, uh, Dr. Stratos is gonna talk about the academics program book and, uh, the enrollment report.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and good evening, Vice Chairman, Mr. Dallas, and board members. You have a few documents in front of you. First, I had given you a binder that has the academic programs, and then I was able to provide you fresh off the press, two booklets, one is summary, as well as the second one is the complete booklet for Beaufort County School District's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Guide to School Programs. I'm gonna refer to the item in the binder for you. Obviously, I've given you the two documents, that you have one as a point of reference, and we have additional printed in order to provide you information for the community. Within the binder that I provided to you this evening, on the left-hand side, as you open it, you should be able to see, there should be a summary sheet in there for you. The summary sheet provides you a quick, at a glance, choice programs available within each school's, in the cluster areas here within Beaufort County School District. And if you look further down, you'll note it gives you important dates. Mrs. Cushing, if you can go to the very beginning of the book, this way you can share to give a highlight, thank you. One of the most important points right now for you as board members to recognize is that we've extended the window of application. In the past, we've had a thirty-day window. Actually, this year, well, or the upcoming academic school year, we'll have a six-week application process for our families and communities here in Beaufort County. Applications will start on the first of March, when we go live, and close on April eleventh. Families will have the opportunity of receiving their letters on May sixteenth. So that's a new add-on for our communities. And that's found in the very beginning of the booklet that you have received. I want you to also note that within the booklet that you have, it's been rearranged. In the past, we had the high schools listed and their programs, where actually we had the grade bands, we had the elementary, middle, and high. Now, the reset-up of the book provides you all the programs in the beginning, and then it goes specifically to the narratives of each one of our specific schools, from our elementary through our middle through our high. I'd like to also bring to your attention that the program book identifies Beaufort County School District Tides Program, which you are familiar with, is our partnership with the Technical College of the Low Country. We've been operating south of the Broad. And this coming academic school year, we will open north of the Broad. We've added a page and program narratives regarding Hilton Head Island Grant, and we happen to be at one of those schools, which is part of this grant, to give our community some information. We've relocated, that some of you are very familiar with, the Career Technical Education Chart. Again, giving you a summary of our Career Technical Education Programs, as well as our community a quick reference point, so they could see what programs are provided within their own backyard. So these items are provided for you for your information, they will go live to our community, and please feel free to reach out to our division for additional information, so that you can have books, or actually, the summaries, I think would be easier for you, as you go out into community promoting Beaufort County School District as your number-one choice.
Dr. Stratos, I have a couple of questions. So it looks like, uh, program availability, um, it's this Pritchardville, River Ridge, Okati, and Robert Smalls are pretty much at capacity for most of these choice programs?
Yes, ma'am.
So one thing I noticed with, um, we do have the new, and I, I'm assuming it's starting next year, the new Magnet School Grant Program from Hilton Head with the, um, I wanna say Changemakers, but stuck in my head, it's not Changemakers.
No, they are.
I know, I'm close, what is it?
We'll take Changemakers, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Um, and that's not listed on here, in this book?
There is actually, there's a narrative page within the book for Changemakers, yes, ma'am.
There is, I just, the same program availability chart.
So if I could share with that?
Sure.
The Changemakers grant is identified to build upon the International Baccalaureate Programs that already exists within the three feeder schools.
So they're wrapped together?
Yes, ma'am. So I didn't want the community to get confused to think that we had something new, because actually, we've been able to obtain the funding to build upon what the schools are already doing successfully, but to build within our International Baccalaureate Programs. So it's not a new academic program, it's a building and an add-on.
Okay, great, and do you mind if I have one more question?
Okay, go ahead.
The Tides Program that we're expanding is ninth grade through twelfth grade.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are in-person classes, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comrades?
Dr. Stratos? Dr. Stratos, I think, you're still on the choice program?
No, I will go to...
So we're, we're, we're good to close out the choi, the, uh, academic program booklet, and then move on to the next item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. And again, board members, thank you. Are there any questions on the academic program?
In, in terms of the choice programs, um, so, I might just heard, uh, one of my colleagues said that the, some, there was certain spots that, and certain programs that are already full. So on, on here, does it, I mean, does it tell parents that those programs that you will be able to apply for already? Or does...
Yes, Mr. Smith, they'll be in two locations. One will be within the narrative, and the second will be within the electronic application. Since parents go in, which that electronic application will go live on March first, parents will be notified within the booklet. The booklet will be electronically on a hyperlink, as well as on these scribbles, as the... booklet will be electronically on a hyperlink, as well as on these scribbles, as the software that we utilize. It'll be within that program as well, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I can tell them just that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. So, board members, the second item this evening, you should have two items that were given to you with regard to dual enrollment. There's an executive summary as well as a presentation, and I'll start with the executive summary. I'd like to bring forward that the state of South Carolina has Regulations 43-258.1 regarding Advanced Placement Courses. And I landed there for a reason. I want us to recognize that the state highly supports accelerated coursework. Advanced Placement Courses are the one course area where the state has defined certification on this language, let's say endorsements, where teachers must sit for the appropriate training in order to teach the course. I also want to bring forward, if you look at the executive summary, some of the information as to how funding occurs for some of our accelerated courses, and that is within the third box. Thank you, Mrs. Cushionberry. If we go to the second page, on your first area, it gives you information regarding the difference between accelerated coursework and dual enrollment. I'd like to take a moment for you to recognize that Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate IB, Advanced International Certificate of Education, which you know I have referred to as ACE slash Cambridge, are courses that are standardized. And what I mean by that, they are state-approved syllabus that are approved at the state level. So we have five different geographical high schools, let's say, within the state. A student is in, I will give you an English Composition Course for ACE. The expectation for the state, as well as for Cambridge, in this case, is my example, would be that it's the same items being instructed. There's a little more flexibility when it comes to dual enrollment. They are not standardized within the state, the syllabus, nor amongst the 50 states in the United States. I wanted to share a little bit of the difference between AP, Dual Enrollment, and Cambridge Courses. If you look at the very bottom, the next table gives you a quick review of the amount of accelerated coursework since 2021, 2022 academic school year, to last year's academic school year. The bottom line, it gives you the totals for respectively the AP, Advanced Placement Courses, the totals for ACE, IB, and Dual Enrollment. If you do get the opportunity, those are two hyperlinks. Actually, it will give you a little more information if you wanted to get deeper into the differences amongst the AP and IB courses, or for many of you who may have students who are going into high school or going into college, what colleges are looking for admissions purposes. I thought that would be a good link for you as well to have. I've also provided you a presentation with some information for your education, and I just wanna go to the one slide in the very beginning, just to give you a quick understanding of the courses one more time. And I apologize, it's hard to maneuver here on the Advanced Placement, we know is AP, and I don't wanna read it out to you in detail. But we recognize that these are college-level courses, and the first three courses here listed are all tied to exams, very specific exams. And at receiving a specific score, and I'll give you an example of three or higher, college credit is received. We also recognize on this, I give you a brief description of dual enrollment coursework. So the information in the presentation is provided for you. The very last slide, if we can go there, Mrs. Cushionberry, is a quick summary. That gives you, I'm sorry to apologize, I would go one up. It's a quick summary of the presentation for you, just for your own information. Mrs. Cushionberry, I do apologize, second from the last, ma'am. Thank you. Keep going through, if you could pause right there, thank you. Right there. That's your quick summary. And as Mrs. Cushionberry has been so kind to share, the very last slide is a resources to share with students and families within your communities and your constituents. So with that, I'll pause at this time if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Stratos. I had asked for this because as someone who has a child in high school and is going to college, I had noticed a dramatic increase in the number of kids enrolled in dual enrollment. And that's tracking nationwide, where it's almost doubled from pre-pandemic to currently. And it's experiencing tremendous growth here in the Low Country. And just looking at those courses, I thought that was kinda, I didn't really realize, but I did, I had ChatGPT do some math for me. Percentage increase in AP from 2021 to 2024, eight, roughly 17.58%. In IB, we have an increase of 25.45%. And in dual enrollment, we have an increase of 375.78%. And that's dramatic. So I think dual enrollment is an excellent avenue for a lot of people, and I fully support dual enrollment. The reason I bring it up is because I have heard over the last two years, as more and more people that I know, in fact, I would say almost everyone I know who has a child in high school is doing dual enrollment. And I've heard that there is, there's a lot of different reasons for doing dual enrollment, but I feel like in some ways, sometimes the horse is getting out of the barn. I should have a better analogy, it's been a long day. And I know even nationwide, people are starting to grapple with this, like what does dual enrollment mean? A lot of parents are telling me that they think it's great because it gives them college credit. And I can tell you that I don't think they're getting much college credit out of dual enrollment. Certainly not outside of the state of South Carolina is dual enrollment gonna be taken. And Clemson and USC, our flagship universities, evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So I wanted to, the reason I bring it up is because I worry a little bit that we are cannibalizing some of our other high achievement courses, even though we are growing them, because they're given the same weight and the same application. So what I wanted to bring up to the board, and we can have a work session about this some other time, but I think it's worth the board starting to pay attention and the districts starting to pay attention, because I think we're gonna have some dissatisfied students coming down the pike. I know we're taking a lot of these classes now are asynchronous online classes. So kids are going to high school, they're taking one, maybe two courses at their home school, and then they're done for the day. And they're basically, I was told by one of the parents that a set of videos are emailed out on a Sunday, and the assignments are due on Saturday. And there's no interaction with the professor, there's no interaction with the other students. So to me, this is not a good example of getting people prepared for college. So one thing I wanna, you know, I'm a huge advocate for the International Baccalaureate Program. I don't hide that. But I looked, because there is not really much in the way of good data of what percentage of these dual enrollment classes are actually accepted for credit, because a lot of parents are under the impression that they're gonna take three or four college credits, and they're gonna save thousands of dollars per credit hour when they enroll. I looked at, so I didn't, I couldn't find data, but I did find data on the graduation rate of people comparing IB, AP, dual enrollment, because I thought that would be a good proxy. If people are graduating early or in, within four years of dual enrollment, they're getting credit. Less than 40% of students that take dual enrollment classes are graduating within four years. And that's a stat that a lot of colleges track. We get into the 60s when you go to AP. With an IB full diploma, you are 89% for your college. So I think to the board, you know, for information for the public and for the board, if you wanna save money, I can promise you, you want your kid to graduate in four years. You do not want that fifth year at $70,000, $30,000, whatever college you're sending them to. So I think that it's something that bears a little bit of watching. I think we need to push, not back, but push into our partnerships with TCL and U.S.C.B. and make sure that the courses that our kids are taking make sense. Because what I do hear sometimes is people are like, well, I didn't have anything left to take because I had taken all my requirements, and I still have a year of high school to go. And so they sign up for U.S.C.B., and the way it works is U.S.C.B. sends out a list, and then you have to send in your application. And then they, by the time most of the parents get to where they actually are signing up for the class, most of these classes are full. And it's sort of this scramble to find something that they can take. And then, next thing you know, the kid's in an asynchronous Zoom class. So I think dual enrollment's really, really valuable, but I am concerned at the pace of growth within the community, the relationship that we have with our partnership organizations, and making sure that these courses are meaningful to the students. And that, I mean, honestly, I think the online part concerns me, because we just got out of COVID. I'm not ready for kids to go back on, online. And then making sure that parents understand the reality with these dual enrollment classes. They're not gonna walk in and get a quarter or semester of credit at Clemson if they take some of these classes. It's very, very, in fact, Clemson says on their website, they evaluate each dual enrollment class case by case. There is no standard whatsoever. So what I've heard from many parents is that turns out, none of these classes actually did count. So that's just kinda why I wanted to have this conversation, is I think it's something we need to have with the public, with the parents. We need to emphasize our AP and our IB, and our teachers that are credited, and teaching in the classroom in a collaborative environment with other students. If that's what you're looking for, that's more closely going to mirror your college experience. So in conclusion, I think dual enrollment's great. I think it has its purpose. Some people learn differently than others, and if they wanna do dual enrollment, that's great. What I don't wanna do is give the impression that it's a similar experience to an AP or IB college coursework. Thanks. Wasn't so much a question. That wasn't so much a question.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Smith?
This slide that you show us, where can we find that in these books?
It's, actually, it's not in the, it's, that would not be in the book, Mr. Smith. It's on the separate presentation that should be in your board docs for this evening.
Okay, okay.
And if you need, I could have, through Mrs. Cushionberry, have that forwarded to you as well, sir. I believe it's actually being in your board docs.
See, I can find, I just was looking, I was looking, the whole time I was looking, looking, looking for the information that you've given us, because those could possibly be some talking points or some, go back to my notes as referred to, what you've given us this afternoon. Also, also in that, and then first, excuse me, back up. I do appreciate you and your staff for taking time out and for giving us such great, great information to be spreading, to good gossip, to good news to our community members, and to giving them the information they need to make sure our students are successful. I do appreciate y'all for taking time out and doing that.
That's.
Do wanna do that? Yes, ma'am. Then my second question is, in terms of, I remember that we were working on a while back, in terms of the full student of Beaufort County, the Beaufort County student, what that looked like, the profile, the profile, right, the profile of a Beaufort County student. And someone asked me about that the other day, and we were talking about that. And he asked me, I remember y'all talking about that, where can we find the profile? And I said, you know what? I said, hold on, before I tell you a lie, let me tell you the truth, I'm not sure, let me check, let me check on that. And so going over this, what I felt was a great time to find out in here and see where the, where was, where's the actual profile of a Beaufort County student? Where are we at with that? Where is that at in here?
If I may separate the two. So the profile of a Beaufort County student is designed around stewardship, echoliteracy, having an understanding of our community. And we build a lot of our lessons with regard to when we're doing curriculum writing, tying that to our profile work. We don't have a booklet in relation to a comparison of that. A very good point that you brought, to have, maybe to have had that profile in relation to the academic programs. I like the idea, but I did not take advantage of doing that and developing that book. So I do recognize that, but it is a very good idea, sir.
But it's also, it's available on our website?
It is.
Where they can find the profile of a graduate.
Okay. And with that information on it, so they can't find it on the website?
They can find the profile.
Yes. And we have lessons in Rubicon that we have developed over the past few years in support with our pillars that tie to the profile of a Beaufort graduate as well, sir. And that's in Rubicon for our teachers, not the general public.
Right, right, ma'am. And I appreciate, and I'll just close with, I definitely appreciate that information right there, because now I can, I'm looking for one of those people, so I can, I can spit out on them, because she likes to give me a test. But lastly, I would just, I just want to say, in terms of what my colleague, Mrs. Boatright, was saying, she has some, she has some pretty good, she brought up her kinda a great, some, well, she brought some good, some good information in terms to, to look into, in terms of, because these, I look at the students of this district as our students of tomorrow, and as our leaders of tomorrow, in terms of, they may be, they may be the students that may have to help me out. They may be a doctor, I may go see them, in terms of, look right here, me and Mrs. Gordon, a couple of years ago, I was just at Mrs. Gordon's class, and I was just, you know, you know, one of her students. Now, now she's grown me and mentored me to, you know, to be on the board. But my thing in saying that is this, it's a serious thing in terms of when you're looking for time, you being intentional about putting kids into, your child into a program with the notion of, when they go to a school like Clemson, or to a school like USC, or to any school, even wherever it stays, we see you, that they are taking these students' credits, because these students, they work hard to get, to get these credits and to have, to have, to have those degrees, I mean, those college courses to transfer. And what am I, what are you saying, what I'm saying is that me as a board member, me as me being a steward, and having intentional conversations with the U.S.C.B. and with the university in terms of who we partner with our students for, to be, to take these courses to them, I'm not sure what it's gonna take, but I think it may just may be up to have a, we may need to have a conversation around about the information that we just received, because that is kinda mind-boggling, because, you know, we wanna get more bang for our buck, to make a long story short. And in the process of getting more bang for our buck, we wanna make sure that we are, we are honestly arming our students with the tools that they need in their toolbox to be successful, so they can move on and go from that five-year to that four-year, and what that look like. So that's just what I wanna say. That's concerning, I just wanna make sure that we are, we are checking, because like I said earlier, in a further, another presentation is that I wanna make sure that we're getting, we're getting something out of, out of it, we're not just partnering, partnering up with people. And I know you wouldn't describe us, that's not your character, but I'm just saying, you know, that people aren't, are slinging us along, and we catch our own, because we're caught right now. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, Dr. Rodriguez.
One thing I would add to that dual enrollment conversation, though, is some of our programs that we have are, for example, in an early college model, or in the BCSD Tides Program. If you're graduating high school, and you're graduating in addition to your high school diploma, you're graduating with a two-year degree, you, due to those courses through that program, you've earned a two-year degree. So you would be moving on to a third year of college, right, at a university that accepts you through that, through that performance, right? I think what Ms. Boatright is mostly referring to is students who aren't necessarily in a program that captures, designed to capture a two-year degree in the end. And so you take courses, and then you find a course over here you wanna take, and so you take that dual enrollment course, right? I think what she's saying is that when universities, when you're going through your admission process, and universities are auditing your transcript to determine what courses they're gonna accept for credit, you know they're gonna accept an AP course, or with, with, a score on the AP exam of a three or higher, or, or an IB course with an IB exam that's been passed, right? Or an ACE course with an ACE exam that's been passed, right? What she's saying is that when they take the dual enrollment, and they do an audit of that, that they may or may not accept that dual enrollment credit. Okay? But if you're graduating, for example, Whale Branch Early College High School with, with a two-year degree, or you graduate with a BCSD Tides with a two-year degree, right, that two-year degree is accepted, and how that applies to your greater four-year program of study, then you're in your junior year. Okay, so.
And Vice Chair, Mr. Dallas, if I can- And Vice Chair, Mr. Dallas, if I can bring to Mrs. Boatwright, as we go into our memorandum of agreement with the university as well as with TCL, the opportunity to treat our children as the same access as their own students will be very much noted at that agreement. So thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussions from those online?
Okay. Thank you. That concludes superintendent report.
Thank you very much.
Okay, no further board business action. Is there a motion to accept the items on the consent agenda?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Second by Dr. Carr. All present here physically? Okay, aye. Everyone's aye here. Online, alphabetically, if you will, please?
Leea, aye. Guyer, aye. Alfonso, aye.
He had to leave.
Oh, he did? Okay, all right. Did you get that, Mrs. Cushionberry? All right. Passes. Thank you very much. Future agenda topics? Okay, all right. Announcements? So announcements, we then move...
Mr. Dallas? I'd just like to recognize Dr. Campbell and their team with the African-American History Education Conference this past weekend, started on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And they did an outstanding job and was well-received by the community, so, members in attendance, so.
I'd like to buttress that as well. I attended on Saturday. It was a phenomenal program. It was a very good learning session. I think Colonel Guyer attended one of the days also. So it was represented and supported, and look forward to a future iteration of it.
Okay. Public comments?
This public comments will be given by Mr. Jim Miller of 122 Brickway Street, Bluffton, South Carolina, 29910, phone number 843-301-6549. Email address is jrmiller65, is that a KY?
KU.
KU89? Okay. W@aal.com. And the date is, he's going to talk about ban, brief review, and progress. Mr. Miller?
Thank you much. I would like to, for all you, first of all, I welcome all you new board members and people in new chairs, but especially the new board members. I would like to give you a little background where I have spoke and advocated for the ban over the last three semesters. I see opportu, I started out three semesters ago, I'll put it this way, and seeing a lot of opportunities compared to other districts. So I started advocating, and I'm more of a data person. I'm not a musician, but I just saw how we compared to other districts. So I have continued to advocate. The board has, I'm sure, has taken up the quest. I'm sure the district has taken up the quest. And I'm just here now just to showing you the progress. Most recently, the number of students qualifying for region and state ban con, all county, all region, and all state bans has improved. At the high school level, it's nearly double the number of students who qualified to be in one of the region bans. On the negative side of that, we've still got room to go. When you look at the data that I've provided you and you look at it with respect to the size of the schools, schools with the same size as ours, they have two or three times the number of students in those areas. Also, the area that needs to, to me, looking at the data, are that we don't see much progress at the middle school. There's a lot of room there. You've got to grow that if you're going to have high school bans. But the high school band have really done an exceptional job and have almost doubled the number of students in this all-region ban this year compared to last year. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. So what?
Good update.
Yep, good update. All right, I think that...
Moving to adjourn?
Moving to adjourn. All in favor?
So moved.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all.